Welcome everybody to Town Hall Meeting number 64. It's September 5th, 2023. And today, we are joined by Fly, Tevo, Francis, Haley, Ian, Judith, Canichi and Tommy and Walter, at least. Thanks for joining, everybody. Today's outline of the Town Hall is going to be first an update on the workgroups, then some shoutouts, including the Supervisory Council election, and then there's room for open topics. And of course, when getting started, for those joining in for the first time or watching this on YouTube for the first time, a little reminder on what the Singularity Net Ambassador Program even is. It's basically a group of self-organizing workgroups, which all aim to contribute to the growth of the Singularity Net ecosystem. And yeah, basically you get to help out and hang out with cool people in the meantime, and you get some rewards for your contributions as well. If you're interested in joining the fund, then do hop onto our Discord server. There's a Getting Started channel to get you started, and from there on, everything will be smooth sailing. Then that brings us to the workgroups updates. Let me quickly check if, with the very first on the list, the archival workgroup, I don't think we have a representative currently. Their bi-weekly meeting will take place this week, so that's tomorrow, at 13 UTC bi-weekly. Luckily for this specific workgroup, if there's any workgroup keeping track of what they're doing, it's the archival workgroup, so you can find on the meeting summary channel, you can find the proper status update and latest. Then next on the list, on the same bi-weekly slot, Wednesdays at 13 UTC, we've got the D Work PBL workgroup. Tevo, can I ask you to give a little update, what's going on there?
Yeah, so in this, last week, we basically went over our information, more like the content that we've been creating of the onboarding content for D Work. And we didn't do sentiment analysis, so we actually focus now more to get the website live, so that when it's live, it's much easier to have like an analysis of this thing, and then you can actually go to that page on your own. Right now, we have still it on localhost, so it made it more complicated to have like a nice analysis session. So we more looked at the overall, how these things looked, few pointers that brought up, and then we distributed each other new activities. So over the few weeks now, we will be doing more of the specializing content. And yeah, if you're, yeah, it's still yes unclear, but right now, we're planning either to go live next meeting, so it's in two weeks. On live session, we basically learn how to go live and see if it's successful within live. And if that doesn't happen, or we get more, we do it quickly, then on that day, we're also going to look at our drafts of what we do today. So we are going nicely, quite a lot of content is pushing through there, and we are all trying to kind of lead the way to demonstrate one PBL, so that we can start exploring other PBLs and onboarding methods through a systemic platform.
Good stuff. Then next on the list would be the Process Modeling workgroup, which currently, well, I guess I'll let you mention as well.
And so in process modeling, as you have heard if you're watching Town Hall, several weeks in row, we've been just working on the workgroup formation and like minimum requirements to establish a workgroup or a program in the ambassador program. And then we finally reached the end, we also made it more nicer looking, so it's easier to kind of look all of that matrix and kind of make a difference of this, what's the difference between these workgroups? And now it's time for, yeah, to slowly, over the weeks now, get it in front of each workgroup leads and members and who are bypassing here and want to do something, contribute some kind of energy in a workgroup or skill to ambassador workgroup, then hopefully this will be a good guiding document to let you know what are the minimum expectations from the program to do something in small scale or in a large scale. And it is showing quite a huge like differentiation, where if you just have an idea and you want to get started, nothing stops you, there are no requirements, except just naming what is what you're trying to do, the purpose, and what is, you think the first role or skill that comes to mind that is needed to do what you're doing. But yeah, as you go move on and you do months and you want more funding and resources, then there are going to be more and more like requirements that we want you to kind of enlighten us, because in the end, we're not doing individual work, we're trying to collectively build our capacity and knowledge. So open information of how do we do things is quite relevant. And yeah, I may can also drop a PDF on the chat.
Yeah, perfect. I'll include it on the video description as well. Good stuff. That does bring us to the next one, being this Strategy workgroup. Tommy?
Oh, maybe just before, go, maybe a few more notes. There is a new scheduling link, I'm gonna share also that in chat. So we have, this week, we skipped Process Modeling workgroup, and for next week, we're looking a new time and date when we continue with that workgroup. To have like a bit of shift in time zone and date, and allow other people to try to share when to have these workgroups. And now that, thanks.
Yep, perfect. Then on to Tommy for this Strategy workgroup.
Just want to make sure, Tiva, are you done now?
Yeah, I'm good, man.
Okay, thank you, sir. So Strategy is working, we had been working on a Code of Ethics, and we pivoted a week ago to Code of Conduct, per several suggestions and input. We did pivot to the Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct, and last week, we had a really fun session in Fly's AI Sandbox, and we ran the preliminary Code of Conduct document through several different instructions. And essentially, we had the AI hallucinate, and we had it answer in the voice of one of Fly's favorite authors. So we got some really interesting output, and that is in the document I put in the chat. And what I'd like between today and tomorrow's meeting is, is if you could go in and synchrosely comment, we're trying to wrap up this Code of Conduct with Strategy, and we're going to meet tomorrow, 16:00 UTC. And after that, we're going to move to, we're looking for a different time. We had migrated out of later on Wednesday incubation needed that time. The 16:00 UTC because of Cardano Catalyst is a little funky, so we're probably gonna move it to Monday right after or before Education Guild, but I'm still trying to figure out the best time. So join us tomorrow, Wednesday, look at the link, Code of Conduct, and please give us some feedback on that. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you. And then as for Shadowed, next is the Incubation Workshop. Fly?
Yo, yo, yo. Hey, hey, guys. Hey. Yeah, so incubation workshop will happen this week at 19 UTC. Let's chat, Tommy, because with the change of, there'll be some changes to incubation over the next weeks, like adapting to some people even. So yes, Tommy, let's chat, perhaps we can find out, find out a nice way to sync up meetings again. I was also thinking about changing away from Wednesdays, because it becomes quite a difficult day personally. Yeah, so incubation is a place to kind of, well, incubate ideas for the program and to look at things that can inspire us and, yeah, make the program grow. So come along tomorrow, 19 UTC, it's a very open session, where we'll just come with ourselves, with our open minds and idea and discuss. Well, thanks.
Thank you. And then moving on to the list, Treasury Guild. Looking at attendants, I guess I can ask Tevo again?
Yeah, so Treasury Guild, last week, we skipped, because we had this Community Governance event forum, basically, and there was like single, huge, good discussion about like Singularity Net, there also was that, and Pol Trek and Wada, and we had like different levels of how do we kind of navigate in DAOs and like use these kinds of features. But yeah, now the Treasury Guild starts from this week, bi-weekly. And in today's call, we are going over some ambassador rewards again and give a quick insights into these fund requests that has been coming up this month, and like just basically start looking at what are we rewarding each other for, and then learn from that and see if we can help each other to make it easier for record contributions and more clear and transparent. And yeah, also, we have a new quarter coming up, so obviously, we're gonna talk about how do we distribute and plan these ambassador rewards coming forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this is also connected to the still ongoing discussion on the internal structure of the program, the roles and levels, and connected through what. But yeah, having the quarter, the Q4 starting in, what is it, three and a half weeks? That would be a proper time to have it all, sorry, pretty much. Cool, thank you. Then there's the Onboarding workgroup. And I do have on the next slide also some dedicated space for the Onboarding workgroup, so Sugar, up to you if you want to take the stage right now or a bit later, as you wish.
Yeah, I will. Hello, everyone. Okay, so the Onboarding workgroup, the past few weeks have met to talk about how to hold an onboarding session for new members. And in our last week meeting, we were able to finalize a slide deck, which we're going to use for the presentation. And we also had infographic made by one of the members, which I've posted in the Ambassador General channel. And I'd like everyone here to help to publicize this on Twitter, on any other platform you're in, to make an announcement, let people to know that we're having this onboarding session, and it's generally open for everyone, even if it's for new members, but everyone is welcome to let me, that's our session. So this Thursday, by 13 UTC, we'll be holding the session, and it's not going to be the regular workgroup meeting. The next workgroup meeting will be next week, on the 14th. So that's that for onboarding.
Good stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the list would be the AI Sandbox. I see it's kind of, the order is not aligned with the actual weekly calendar. Anyway.
Yeah, man, anyway. Yeah, AI Sandbox is pretty self-explanatory, is place to come have fun, experimenting, playing around, sharing, doing things with primarily LLMs and prompting, and sometimes applying that to some things we're doing in the ambassador program. Yeah, it's just a place for fun experimentation, come along if you would like.
And let me double check, this week? It's gonna be next week, right?
Yes, yeah, next week. But this week is the Onboarding Town Hall.
Ahah. It's good, eh? Yeah, I do have the shoutout to that a little later, but might as well give two, because it's gonna be an interesting one. It's 19 UTC on Thursday. Then next on the list would be the Writers' workgroup. Canichi, could you give us a short update?
Definitely. Hello, guys. Glad to be here. Our update for the last week was not really that much, but we did really good numbers on our page, that three hours back. Yeah, it's our best so far, and it's really, really doing well. I think based on our stats, a lot of our readers came from AI, machine, and then, and I think a bit of regular LLM fans were there, so that's really good. So we shifted our focus towards that.
I'm not, I think we may have lost you for a second.
I'm sure you can.
Ah, now I can hear you.
I think it breaks enough, isn't it?
And that I could not hear, I apologize, that was mostly my hearing rather than the connection, I think.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so as I was saying, we actually did good numbers on the Zaka, and we've shifted to adding and explain like on five Twitter threads on our content, and also atomic essays, which will be like 250 words, kind of like essays, and they will be targeted at specific things based on our audience and our stats in the coming weeks. So that's kind of like our focus right now. We are also, we also added a new, I think I already mentioned this on the last call, but yeah, we added a new Spreblot, so I'd say. And there are lots of people also taking a detest. You know, the largest in the last couple of days, a lot of them have reached out, and the submissions are currently in review, so yeah, we are really moving forward.
Awesome, thank you. Then next on the list is the Video workgroup. And Rojo, could you give us a little update?
Yeah, for sure. Hi, everyone. So last week, we discussed a lot about what's gonna be happening forward in the workgroup. Some of the main things we discussed is how, the strategy, how to go forward with focusing on Twitter as our main social media for posting videos, and the strategy of what type of videos we'll be making. We also talked about the rebranding that will be voted this week, and that will be a rebranding from the Video workgroup to the Media workgroup. Since we're working on animation and other forms of media, we wanted to have the title kind of inform people about the nature of work we're doing. We have a lot of newcomers requesting joining the workgroup, and for that, we will open a task by the end of this week. We need to kind of think about the type of task we will be doing, since before we had clips as the way that someone can access the membership. But since we're moving away from the clipping kind of content we used to do, that will need more, more of like some thinking. But yeah, that's about it.
Curious to see how that will unfold. Thank you. That does bring us to the last one on the list, not the least one, it's the Education workgroup.
As you say, last but not least, we are reviving the Education workgroup after summer hiatus last week, and I think the week before, Rojo and Walter, Wakka, started working on an educational initiative to educate our existing cadre and also newcomers that want to reach ambassadorship about the different spinoffs in the ecosystem. We recognize that we have a very good infrastructure built up over the last year and several months with the Treasury platform, with Discord, and the archival group, video and writers' workgroup. But now we need outbound ambassadors, we need to start developing a small core of educated and vetted individuals that can go out and talk about all of the spinoffs, Sophia Dao, Sophia Verse, Kojito, Nune, et cetera. So we're going to be working in conjunction, and there's gonna be a lot more work or tasks for both the Writers' group to write scripts and the Video workgroup to create original educational pieces in an effort to build up content. We had a discussion earlier in the Ambassador Assembly about a platform for that, which we think will take some time to build. So we're looking to do this through a quarter four, and a target goal is the end of quarter one, 2024, to have this out. It may go longer, but join us Mondays, 19:00 UTC, Educational Guild, and the goal and the focus is on outbound education to develop a very educated and talented ambassador cadre capable of carrying the message. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that does sum up all the workgroups. Just wanted to point out, for completeness sake, that we do have a public calendar, which you can add to your Google Calendar, so you never have to miss any of these meetings. Then the next topic I want to touch on is the Supervisory Council election. We pushed out a blog post today, and that includes not just some timelines and how it works, but also the full context on how the Supervisory Council fits into the Singcom DAO, the Singularity Net Community DAO initiative. And that's a PDF in itself, it's linked in that blog post we pushed out today. And yeah, basically, an open call-out, applications are open. You can, if you go to the blog post, you can find a link to the Sway platform, where we'll collect applications, and people can interact with the candidates. And so at the same time, it's also a call-out for those who are not applying to be participating on the Sway platform. Yeah, it's a quite important role to be in the Supervisory Council, so candidates should also be able to deal with comments, so don't hesitate there and be critical. And yeah, to, I guess there's an AMA session actually on the coming Thursday at 16 UTC. I now realize this overlaps with the second half of Treasury Guild meeting. We did try to wiggle around, but this was pretty much where we landed. And it's also added to the ambassador calendar. So yeah, would like to invite you all to do join that session. Also, the blog post has a link to an AMA forum where you can supply your questions. I included a little timeline as well on the sheet, taken from the blog post. Basically, the applications are open right now, and they close at the 1st of October, end of day UTC. And then the week after that, there will be multiple community events where the candidates will introduce themselves, and I think it will be Twitter Spaces, it might be Zoom, but yeah, a similar open platform where anybody can join to interact with the candidates. And then the voting takes place from the 11th of October until the 17th, so that's yeah, one full week of voting period. Yeah, that covers, so do read the blog post. And then I did also want to give some special attention to the onboarding session this Thursday at 13 UTC. Sugar and Spice already mentioned it. I would really urge anybody who's interested to join that session, and it'll be pretty, yeah, mostly educational, about what the ambassador program even is, what the possibilities are, what you can do, and how you can join in and find your spot into the program. So for the more senior members, it might be, well, you could share your knowledge, that's very welcome. But yeah, it will be beginner level, let's say. We're looking forward to that one, and then on the same day, actually, there will be the Deep Funding Town Hall, which Fly alluded to. And I just want to give a little shoutout to the deep funding team, Rafael specifically, Jan as well, and all the people proposing, because I think we broke all records. I mean, it's only the third round, but it was 136 proposals, which is like, I don't know, skyrocketing. That's really good to see. Yeah, also an open invite to anybody to hop onto the Sway platform to comment on the proposals, because scrutiny is needed, we're giving away, well, giving away, we're rewarding people with quite a bunch of tokens, and that better be spent well, so do share your opinion on the proposals. And additionally to that, if there's anybody in the room right now who is in Deep Funding Round Three with proposals, feel free to give a little pitch, or however you want to call it, a little shoutout to your own proposals, if you want. Not required, but the floor is yours if you want to.
Yeah, I got a few proposals going in the portal. I'll just copy and paste them before you go. Yeah, any feedback is very appreciated.
I think we can also include them in the description of the video. If you feel like going into detail for a minute or something, you can, you don't need to.
I can say a little bit, like quite different, and the one proposal is trying to develop our consistent storytelling, basically, and put that in a matter of first contact, link up with Sophia Vass, hopefully. One is a kind of toolkit on self-organization, trying to basically condense cyber ethic principles into easily digestible like recipe books for communities such as this program to use. And the other one is to scout for AI services and proposals by going to Web Summit this autumn. So yeah, welcome any feedback.
I have to admit, I personally still have to go over, well, all of them, not just yours, but planning to go all over. I have to admit, I personally still have to go over, well, all of them, not just yours, but planning to, to go all over. Over all of them and I did skim a little, I, yeah, to me it looks promising. I see Rojo also posting a link to a proposal, um, multiple.
Um, I wanted to talk about these two proposals, uh, especially one of them actually, uh, because it's just very relevant to the work we do in the in the video workgroup. So, uh, one of these proposals, I don't know which one exactly, uh, is about implementing this solution, this API on the marketplace that will give, actually two APIs, one of them will give summaries of videos. And the other one will give timestamps, automatic timestamps. And we're planning to, uh, to, uh, fine tune an LLM, uh, most, most probably it's gonna be Lama two to provide such a solution on a large scale and I could see the, the ambassador program utilizing such tool, since we have a lot of video output, especially from meetings and all. So yeah, uh, the second one uh, is more nichey and it's about implementing fact checking for hard facts. I mean, if you have an article that says, for example, I don't know, I don't know any facts at this point, but let's say that the gravity on Earth is three, but it's nine point nine eight or something like that. So we would, yeah, we would give like a flag that this is, uh, this is not factually correct. And it's also using, uh, LLMs. Um, we're planning to collaborate with Mindplex, uh, as a first case study after developing this to implement this as a solution for the, for the articles being, uh, pushed on Mindplex. And if that works, uh, sky is the limit. But yeah.
Awesome. Best of luck to both of you. Um, I quick, looking around the room, is there anybody else with proposals on there? I think that's most, if not all. Really curious to see how the vote goes. Cool. I do think that brings us, yes, it does, that brings us to the more open, uh, undefined portion of the agenda for today, um, where there's room for, um, well, basically anything, any questions you might have, any ideas you wanna share with the group. There's room for newcomer introductions if anybody wants to. Uh, it's not a requirement, but it's an opportunity if you feel like it. So yeah, the floor is open. I see a question, um, uh, in chat if we can have the copy of the meeting chat. And yes, I'll simply put it on on the general channel. See some more people joining in, slightly on the ending side of the call, but nonetheless very welcome. I think we might have an early ending today, which, um, just a quick double check, I, I don't think we've got much questions going on. Oh, all right. Cool, then, then that's it for now. Um, and I hope to see you during one of the ten more sessions that's gonna be this week. It's crazy.
And the supervisory council AMA.
Yes.
Everyone here is just super, it's, it's amazing how much everybody here is together in this span of time hitting the ambassador program up and running. Peter, you're amazing, central impetus and then everybody else's time and energy, effort, passion. And I hope that we can pull all this into seed SingComDAO and, and, and use this as a head start to help that whole initiative move forward. So I, I really appreciate everybody being here and I look forward to seeing many of you participating heavily in, in the election process and then in the seed SingComDAO.
Couldn't agree more, yeah, it's lovely to see stuff unfolding. Um, yeah, then for the recording, I will put a short recap right now, um, after that finish the recording and just a small reminder, next town hall will be next week at the same time and the same place. Um, yeah, so today, um, basically we started out with a summary of the workgroups, um, all the updates can be found in the full recording. And then a couple of shout outs, um, starting with
Peter?
Sure. Yes, I know, I understand even. I'll click the stop share button for the recording, actually. Nice.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks for the reminder. Um, yeah, a short recap of today's town hall would be, um, we started out with the workgroup ups, uh, workgroup updates, which can all be seen in the, in the main recording. And then a couple of shout outs, uh, today we pushed out the block on the supervisory council election, uh, where the applications are now open, so you can find the block and apply or scrutinize other candidates. And then coming Thursday, there's an onboarding session, session for the ambassador program, which will be a entry level, beginner level, um, explanatory session. That's at thirteen UTC. And then later on Thursday, there's the deep funding town hall. And for this round, there were a hundred thirty-six proposals, including some of our very own ambassadors, so do check out the links in the video description. And that pretty much sums it up. So yeah, thanks all for joining and hope to see you on the next one.
Thanks for facilitating, Peter. Did a great job. Thank you, everybody, for joining.
Thanks for hosting. Thank you.
Good to see you and yeah, see you on Discord.